All right. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. And we'll begin, I'll invite you to stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then invocation will be by Rick Evans.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you, Lord, for bringing us all here safe again tonight, Lord. We pray that you will keep all our city and our employees safe during these trying times that we're having right now, Lord. We pray that you will give us the guidance tonight in all the items that we discuss and give us the guidance to know how to vote on what we do, and, Lord, and give us safe trips home and give us the nice weather next few weeks for the holidays, Lord. Your new prayer, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rick. All right. We have large print agendas available over there. Wyman's got them, if that would be helpful to anyone. Now, I will want to welcome everyone again to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, and I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Overton?
Sorry.
Jim Reed?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rick Evans?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Kathy J. Cox?
Here.
Ernest K.
Here.
I don't know what we've done, but the sound in here is great. Y'all are hot, though, so don't cuss under your breath, or everyone will hear it. Okay. Item four, this is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council concerning something that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come to the microphone at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes.
No minutes.
No, there are no minutes. They will be approved, provided at a later date.
Been busy.
Oh, you've been busy, okay. Procedural motions, item six. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for six A and B. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Does have an emergency clause.
Would the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Does have an emergency clause.
Would the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Does have an emergency clause.
Would the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Harwell, for those compelling arguments.
Yes, they've earned me.
All right. Item eight, a resolution endorsing participation in the sales and use tax refund program authorized by the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003 in Arkansas Code annotated 15-4-2706D. Scott Edmondson with the Springdale Chamber.
Thank you, Mayor Sprouse. This tax pack resolution is on behalf of a local company, Now Diagnostics, who are located out on Old Missouri Road on 265, just south of, a couple blocks south of NTI. And on this expansion, it's approximately $5.3 million expansion, majority of it coming in new equipment, but with the project, it's to do their COVID antibody test that they're working on. And I don't know how familiar you are with Now Diagnostics, but they do, they have developed pregnancy tests, food intolerance, food tolerance tests that are tested with just a drop of blood.
And this project will result in approximately 70 new hires at about $20 an hour, so, yeah. Okay, good deal.
Move the resolution pass.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All right, thanks.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. All right. Item nine, Planning Commission Report and Recommendation. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
Well, my button is not working. Let me see if the... Ah, there we go. The first item is a replat of a replat of lots 2A and lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 15 of Railroad Edition, on the west side of Holcomb Street, creating lots 2B, 2C, and 12A. Planning Commission reviewed this replat, recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, and ordinance accepting the replat of said replat of lots 2A and lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 15 of Railroad Edition, creating lots 2B, 2C, and 12A to the city of Spring, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance to pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? All right, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Does have an emergency clause.
Would the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
Again, the emergency clauses are added to the ordinances because of pending developments occurring on these properties. The next item is a rezoning request to rezone property located at 1075 West Sunset. The request is to rezone the property from C2 to C5 and MF4. The C5 district will now be 1.17 acres that has frontage onto Sunset, and the MF4 will be the .52 acres that has frontage onto Mays. And you can see here, that's what the property looks like. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the platte pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C2 to thoroughfare commercial district C5 and low, medium-density multifamily residential district MF4, and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance to pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Does the emergency clause pass?
Second.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
The next item is to rezone property located at 1472 Butterfield Coach Road. It's approximately 3.66 acres. The request is to rezone the property from C4 and 01 to an MF12. The Planning Commission reviewed this rezoning request. The C4 that was planned for this was approved, I think, in 2015, 2016, and it was rezoned to put storage units as a planned commercial district, so that's all it could be. And now they're asking to rezonate from that C4 and 01 to an MF12 district. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoned request. The title of the ordinance reads, and ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the platte pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from planned commercial district C4 and neighborhood office district 01 to medium-density multifamily residential district MF12, and declaring an emergency.
I have a question, Patsy. I wasn't here at committee, and was there any objections being in the middle of residential?
Well, it's a, you know, it's duplexes to the north, it's single-family to the south, so you can see there's kind of a mixture. In my opinion, the C4 being that long, narrow strip down through there was probably the piece that was out of place, and it really was just for that use. The C4 allows for 12 units per acre, but nothing taller than a two-story building or 35 feet. And so that's, there was some concern from the property owners on the south, but the development plan that we have shows all of the development, that the street will be on the south side of the property, the multifamily will back up to the duplexes.
Okay.
And then the question is, do you want storage units in there, or do you want multifamily? That was the question.
They'll have to put a city street there.
They wouldn't necessarily have to put a city street. They can do it with a public, with a private drive, depending on the number of units they put in there, and they can meet the fire code.
What's the minimum number that would trigger, or the maximum number that would trigger that change, to Jim's point?
Where's the fire chief?
Pardon?
I don't like to be the one that quotes how many, how many units it is that you've got to have a second access point. How many units do they have to have before they have a second access point if it's multifamily?
Yeah, they have to have a secondary access.
Okay, so we're going to have less?
Pretty, they have to have secondary access. They're pretty after sprinklers.
Right.
Thank you.
And it came in with one layout that did not meet the commercial, I mean, the multifamily design standards, did not have enough open space, didn't have enough amenities. It got tabled. It came back, and I can tell you there's less buildings and less units, but I can't tell you off the top of my head how many units they are. It will go back, the development plan will actually go back to Planning Commission in September.
Well, I would think where they've had to build something to our city street.
Well, it will be an access, you know, a private drive, built to city standards, you know, it has to be the right width for the fire department, has to have the turnaround, those kind of things, as part of it. But it doesn't have to be dedicated as a public street, as long as they don't have to have two access points. It's all one property. It's not to be divided into separate lots. It would have one ownership, one management company, that kind of stuff. So it doesn't have to be divided by the city ordinance to put those in there.
So go over what MF12 can be again?
MF12 is 12 units per acre, nothing larger than a fourplex, and it allows 12 units per acre. They have to meet multifamily design standards.
And how many acres is this?
3.6. And they have to do...
They can still just have 30 units?
Yeah.
Because of access?
Yeah. Either that, or they have to sprinkle all the units if they want to go over that, and they're not proposing over 30. By the time you put detention on site, which is required, and you meet the open space based on the number of bedrooms that they're putting in the project, they're not going to get 30 units in there. Off the top of my head, I'm remembering somewhere between 20 and 25 is what they were looking at. What the proposal we have now is, they will have attached garages, two-story townhome look. That's, that's what's being proposed now, now. We're not rezoning necessarily for that specific project, but we do have that one coming along with this, but...
So is there a requirement for garages in MF12?
There's not a requirement for garages, but you get credit for garages if you put garages in, in your increased density, but they're not, they're not getting anywhere close to the, to the units. It's a long, narrow piece of property. It's hard to develop a long, narrow piece of property.
So right now, the rezoning is for MF12, and you said it's one person, one property going on?
That's the proposal we have now, yes.
Once they build, then they can sell off, right?
Yes, if they decide to develop it and sell off individual lots, they'll have to come back and plat it, and then we would get a public street. Because we, you know, it has to be in an approved private street, built to city standards, and they maintain it, where it has to have a public street, build to city standards, and the city takes over maintenance. And, you know, it takes a 50-foot right-of-way if you're building a public street, so...
We get a motion.
So you said the houses to the north are duplexes?
Most of them are, yes.
Yeah.
Were the neighbors' objections over traffic, over...
There was concern about access onto Butterfield Coach, but this property only has one access, and that's all they're getting with this. Regardless of whether you put commercial or residential in there, it only has one access point to that. The other concerns was if they were going to back up to the properties to the south and what kind of screening. Keeping it at an MF12, nothing can be taller than two-story. And so you're not putting tall buildings in that location to look down into backyards and those kind of things. They will be required to do screening between the single-family to the south and whatever is built on that piece of property. Multifamily to multifamily takes a different kind of screening, but I think, you know, it would have to have some screening, but not as extensive as it is to single-family.
Isn't this up the road from what we just denied as MF12 a few months ago?
Um...
Farther to the north.
No, that was south of...
No, that was, that was south of 412, yeah. This is north of, yeah, quite, quite a way south of 412. Down by the park was the MF4 that we didn't approve down there, but this is, this is just north of it with this narrow piece in here.
Just north of Walgreens.
Yes, that's true. Yeah.
I know with Butterfield, traffic up there is terrible at times. I know that it's all, you know...
It functions as, as the street is designed for, yes.
With the new road coming in through there, the extension on the curve that's going into Butterfield, are there any lights proposed out there? I know we have traffic calming curves.
Somebody else will have to answer that, because I don't know the design of the Ford Extension. Brad would have to answer whether there's a traffic signal there or not.
I don't know.
No, we're talking about the extension of Ford Avenue.
Ford Avenue to Butterfield Coach. We're not, we're not, we don't have a light planned for there yet.
That's way north there, though.
At what point will it trigger a traffic signal? Is it traffic counts?
Yeah, traffic counts would determine that.
So what was the Planning Commission vote?
Planning Commission was unanimous on this one, I believe.
I'm going to move the ordinance pass.
Okay, got a motion of second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? All right.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Reluctantly, yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Does have an emergency clause.
Would the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Does the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Does have an emergency clause.
Would the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
J. Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
The next item is a request for a conditional use for a tandem lot split at property located at 206 Westwood. It's on the west side of Westwood Lane. It's the property, you see the house back there on the long driveway, they're requesting to split that piece of property off as a tandem lot. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request with the condition that the access easement has to be paved. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use at 206 Westwood, a single-family dwelling as set forth in ordinance number 4030."
Move the resolution pass.[1264.33]
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, resolution. Okay Denise.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
The next item is a request for a conditional use for a use unit forty-two, which is church or synagogue, to be located at, uh, ten forty-eight South Forty-Eighth Street. Uh, the existing building, they have met with fire and building inspection, understand what improvements have to be made to the building for it to be used for this type of use. And they have a parking arrangement made with the property owner for their parking to be at, to the north of this building with a little bit on the front. Uh, planning commission recommends approval of this rezon, of this resolution. Title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving Conditional Use at ten forty-eight South Forty-Eighth Street As Set Forth in Ordinance Number forty thirty."
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
It'd be convenient to Cracker Barrel up there.
Yeah.
Get, get there before everybody gets there.
Cracker Barrel be handy.
There's an, there's advantage.
All right Denise.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
And the last item is a request for a waiver of sidewalk construction along, uh, lots eleven of Sunset Ridge for a single family dwelling. Uh, planning commission reviewed this request. It has some terrain issues. It drops off to the south. The location of the, of the sidewalk would create a problem. Uh, so the planning commission is recommending this with, uh, option one. Uh, "Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvement, Drainage Curbs, Guns and Sidewalks As Set Forth in Ordinance Number Thirty-seven Twenty-five To Burkhardt Construction In Connection With Lot Eleven Sunset Ridge For A Single Family Dwelling." I do need to point out, this subdivision was already developed, the plans were approved without any sidewalks when it was annexed into the city. Uh, we have several of them have got installed as houses were built, but this one kinda has a terrain issue.
Move the resolution pass with option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Further comments or questions?
So what did you say right there at the end that, uh, there is sidewalks on that side of the street?
There is some up, up around in, in other areas in that. There's a sidewalk completely connected on the other side of the street. But this subdivision was approved in Benton County and under construction when it was annexed into the city. And there wasn't a requirement for sidewalks. Uh, most of the units have built sidewalks and this is a request because there's a terrain issue on this side and there is a sidewalk on the other side. If you come on down there, there's a drainage structure just south of this and the water drains to the, to the southeast of this, at the edge of this property as well. And if the second lot ever gets built, the one just south of it, we'll probably get the same request there because it has the same issues.
So you're suggesting there just won't be any sidewalk on that side of the road?
On those, those lots that are heavily wooded down through there, yes. But there is sidewalks on the other side of the street, so.
There are sidewalks on the other side of the street?
Well, like up there in the corner, there's sidewalks.
Yeah, there's up there in the corner. You come down those two lots that are there, you come around the corner. Uh, there's a couple of others in the neighborhood that don't have sidewalks that were built before it was annexed in, so they weren't required to put sidewalks in.
What about that one, just before you get to the corner without sidewalks?
To the north?
Was that one, yeah, to the north. Is that one we gave a waiver for or was, that was already built?
That one was already built when it was annexed into the city.
Okay.
I think these are the only lots that are left to be built on.
And, and are you basically saying it's impossible to build a sidewalk there?
I would never say it's impossible because you can fill and move things around. It's, it's just not in... I know cost is not an issue, but in this case, there was some big trees that would have to be taken out. There's a drainage structure that had to be moved, so there were several things. That's part of the discussion of why they asked for the waiver.
But they're gonna have to build a driveway in there, right?
They got a place to get a driveway across, yes. And they have to do some fill to get that in.
They had to use what?
They had to do some fill to get the driveway in.
Got a motion, a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay Denise.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right, item ten, Finance Committee, Chair Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you. First item before the Finance Committee had to do with, uh, an ordinance to waive, I'll read the title to the ordinance. An ordinance to waive competitive bidding and amend the fire department budget. This had to do with a new staff vehicle. I may let the chief address this, but the ordinance was forwarded from committee to council with recommendation for approval. Thank you council. Basically what this is, is we sold the Hummer for forty-four thousand and we're asking to use forty thousand of that to replace one of our staff pickup trucks.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? All right.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Does it emergency clause?
Move, move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
Thank you.
Second item from the Finance Committee, it was a resolution for, um, to amend the budget for per, purchase of new radio and phone recording system. And the title to that resolution is, "A Resolution Amending the Twenty-Twenty Budget of the Police Department." Um, that resolution was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. Anyone here from the Police Department to address this?
Yeah, what this is, is a new recorder for the dispatch center for our new building. Uh, it's got digital capabilities where our current one is analog and it's not capable of recording all the radio lines and phone lines when we get moved into the new building.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carries eight zero. The third item from the Finance Committee had to do with sale of some property at two oh six West Meadow Avenue, corner of two oh six South Blair Street to, and I'll read the title to the resolution. It is, "A Resolution Authorizing the Sale of Property Located at Two Oh Six West Meadow Avenue Slash Two Oh Six South Blair Street To Artonomics LLC." Second time that this, um, proposal has been before the committee. Uh, it came back after a appraisal was done. The Finance Committee, uh, forwarded this resolution to the council with recommendation for approval.
Prove resolution forward.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Derek's here, if you have any. Anyone? Okay Denise.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, uh, Health and Sanitation Committee Chairman Amelia Williams. Amelia?
Our first item on the agenda, um, has to do with two fifteen West Maple, the demolition of, or removal of, um, the ordinance reads, "In order, ordering the raising or demolition of, and removal of certain residential structure within, in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at two fifteen West Maple Avenue to declare an emergency and for other purposes." Item was tabled from the seven twenty-eight of twenty City Council meeting.
All right.
Hi council, hi mayor, how you doing this evening?
Good.
Um, just an update on it. I had spoken with, uh, Tom, Tommy DeJameson a week or so ago and he had called me in reference to some railing design, which, you know, I long, I told him we were happy with it as long as it was good with our form-based code, which he'd already gotten approved through Patsy, so I had that conversation. Today I went over there and looked at the site with the, uh, contractor and they have cleaned up a lot of debris that was on the west, excuse me, the east side to the Gilbert property and actually have taken down some of what they called the, uh, candy shop or the candy factory. So on the east side, they've cleared that back probably forty feet and took down some of that structure that was in bad shape. Cleaned out some dead trees there. The family actually had been over there at times in the last week or two, 'cause I seen some of their vehicles there and they had moved, uh, the contents from the backside, which is the south side of that candy place, into the better parts of that candy house to the east and they're gonna tear that down. So, I mean, construction wise, I mean, the, the things they've done is they were working on the fireplace today. It's a full masonry fireplace. They were through the roof and possibly we're gonna finish up by the end of the day with all the brickwork out there. Um, as they discussed last time, I guess it's already been a month ago, uh, windows have been measured, have, you know, been basically prepped for order and that's supposed to be happening. Uh, they're probably a couple of months away before they would wanna start the addition to the back of it. But they are working, you know, to clean up the property, to tear down more structures. Um, the contractor even had met with Mister, Mister Gilbert because they were doing some delivery of dumpsters out there early morning and he was fine with it because they were afraid to be causing some noise and never heard from Mister Gilbert. So I think he was happy with the fact that they contacted him and gave him a heads up that there'd be a little noise. Uh, I asked him today about cats on the property. The contractor today said that he had only seen one. He referred to somebody else, possibly one of the family members had been there during the week and they had seen a few others, but they're definitely fewer than there were. Uh, and like I said, I looked in the buildings and it is cleaned out and I know that, uh, smell came up today as far as the contractor said that they had removed some deceased animals that had been there for a while and got rid of some, you know, wet materials. So smells have been hopefully taken care of. Dead trees have been removed. And I'll leave it at that. Let you ask me any questions you want.
Okay. Courtney's here too, if you have any questions for her and of course I see, uh, their attorney and, uh, questions? Obviously they've been working on it.
Tom, how do you feel about it?
I think, I think we were, we were looking at an October date to have it, have that first section, that, the original portion dried in.
And he is still saying that's, that's what his intentions are, the shell, the windows, the roof and all that on that front structure that's there now will be put together within the next, you know, three months.
Okay.
Um, and like, you know, as construction goes, he did say, and it makes sense, I mean, obviously like we talked last time, they're not gonna run electricity in a house that's there when probably two-thirds of the house isn't there. So until that other section gets going, the real activity that we're all looking forward to seeing as far as construction moving on is gonna be somewhat limited. But he did tell me that they had every intentions of being, working over the next sixty to ninety days until they get ready to start that phase to help, you know, cleaning up the area, to finish closing in that house. Um, keep working on tearing down the, uh, structures around the candy factory so that they can get it back down to the, to the rock formation. That's where they're gonna start rebuilding that portion. So they're gonna take down all the bad stuff on that.
I'm assuming they got with you and got their permit up to date.
Yes sir, I gave them that extension on that permit and like I said, you know, um, I have no problem with, you know, making up a miscellaneous inspection that I did look at the fireplace today and it is eighty-five percent complete when I was there around three o'clock. So, I mean, they, they are doing things. I mean, it's not traditional what we would hope to see, but it is, they're ordering windows, it takes six weeks. They, you know, they're having columns turned in Canada, I believe the gentleman told me today, to fit, you know, the aesthetics they're going for the house. So, yeah, you know, I don't think it's gonna be done in six months, but I think they are working on it, so.
How long is the permit extension?
Well, every time a person would call, even like we, this one here, we'd given them back to them and it's basically for thirty days until we got back to this meeting. But truly how it works, Mister Overton calls me for an inspection on a project he's working on, he's got six months from that date to go for another inspection. So they can go on for a while, but most people don't go on for many, many years. But, I mean, I'm willing to let it go on for six months with what he's doing. And I think that we could have a lot more done in six months. Just like, I really would think that we don't necessarily wanna maybe meet every month about it. Let's, let's put this off for three months. And I'm willing to do that too. I mean, it's up to you. I could say, hey, I'm gonna go ahead and okay this addition for the three months.
Seems like that October, that maybe that second meeting in October makes sense since that's when we were looking at, that's when we were told it would be, that original part would be dried in.
Correct.
And, Tom, I did go by the place today, talk to the contractor.
He did tell me that, yes sir.
And they were getting the, the flat roof is gonna be completed today. The, saw the other roofing contractor, he's gonna be, uh, starting on it and the, uh, the brick masons are gonna be finished with the, the tuck pointing. They're definitely, uh, making progress. They had, uh, two dumpsters, uh, out there and, uh, they were pretty well, uh, filled up. So they were, there's, there's activity going on and, uh, I'm, I'm satisfied they're not, uh, they're not waiting around now. And they did, he did tell me they, they found an old column in, uh, one of the old buildings and they found a company in Canada that can in fact replicate those, so it'll be, uh, uh, real, real close to the original, uh, columns out front. So they're making a concerted effort to, uh,
Correct.
to, uh, get this job completed. And like you said, you know, it's, it's gonna take, uh, take a while, but they've done a, a great deal and they're certainly working on it now.
And, and just, I mean, I know, I'm not, I'm, I'm on both sides, you know, 'cause I wanna, I want people to succeed, but I don't want our city to look bad either. But I will say that based on the letter that I sent to them years ago, the attorney's correct. I mean, there aren't any electrical problems anymore because there's no electricity to the house anymore. So, I mean, there are things that are cleaned up. I think that if we could get them over these next couple of months, I think that they would get things going a lot faster because it has been moving things around. I guess, what's that old puzzle you had move pieces to do stuff? And that's kinda what they've done. So I think that if we come back in October, that would be a, I think a reasonable amount of time to get some good activity out of it, you know, so.
I'd like to make a motion, we table this till the second meeting in October.
October twenty-seventh?
Huh?
October twenty-seventh?
October twenty-seventh.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to table until October twenty-seventh. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
The next item is eleven B, reads, "A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk To Execute An Agreement For Interconnection From Municipal Water Systems Between The Cities Of Tonnytown And Springdale, Arkansas." Item was forwarded to the front committee with a recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further questions or comments? Denise?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, item twelve is, uh, I'll just turn that over to Ernest.
Thank you. Uh, this is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, four twenty-two and a half Cottle and six oh two South Cleveland.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Anyone need to speak to this, these properties? All right Denise.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Pow?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight zero.
All right, do we have any further comments from our council members?
I have a question, Mayor. Um, since, you know, the virus has, is here, how are we including the public in these conversations? Do they have to, I mean, are they, I know we're live streamed.
They...
But if they have questions while we're meeting and they can't be in the room?
We can do, we, we have a phone number posted for
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
For conference, yes. There's a toll-free conference call number that they can conference in if they need, if they have questions. Uh, thank you for that because I should've been asking before we vote every time. Uh, I was pretty good about it last meeting and I forgot about it this meeting. And we didn't miss any calls, did we? Okay, well, I'm glad for that. But, uh, that's a good reminder. I need to remember to do that. Uh, of course, we urge people, you know, they, they will get screened if they wanna, if they, if they're able to come in person, they'll get screened and, and, uh, and we, we encourage them to come to address the council in person, but we do have the, the call option. Okay? Okay? Thank you. Any other?
Uh, I have a couple of things, Mayor. Uh, all of us received a, a letter from Albatros Al about the, uh, neighbors requesting a sidewalk on, uh, Lake, the south side of Lakeview, uh, down to Turner Street. And, uh, it's, it's got a couple of, uh, of, uh, opportunities with the, with the terrain, but it's definitely one of those areas that, uh, probably would be of benefit to a number of folks for, uh, safety and security. And I know we've spent, uh, most of our sidewalk budget on trails, but, uh, I would encourage us when we can to look at this and see if it's possible to, uh, start work on, uh, looking toward a, uh, sidewalk on the south side of Lakeview.
I had, I had Brad go out and look at it, Mike, and he's got a cost figure, but the problem is part of that property is in the city of Fayetteville.
Uh, on this side of Turner?
On this, on this.
Yes.
Yeah. Lakeview.
On the south side of Lakeview, part of it, part of it's in the city of Fayetteville.
To the west, to the west of, uh, of Turner?
Yes, west of Turner.
Oh, okay.
So that's why we gotta, gotta figure out how we wanna handle that part. And then it was also the point, we've talked about putting a trail in instead of a, just sidewalks, that's something we have to look at too.
Yeah.
They, they first came to me asking for a trail connection.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I don't know, but Brad, what you priced, the price you gave Rick, hundred and
Seventy-five.
Seventy-something thousand dollars was for a sidewalk, correct? So we'll, we'll need to look at that and, uh, yeah, we, you know, we can, uh, we can sure, I mean, I don't doubt it's needed. We need them in a lot of places, but...
Or, or...
Yeah, so if, if we could get Fayetteville, we could approach Fayetteville to see if they're, have any interest in partnering or, yeah.
And, uh, the other thing, we got a, uh, got an email from individual about the intersection of Ivy Lane and George Anderson, uh, about the, uh, vegetation there. And actually on the, the very corner it's down, but if you drive down Ivy to, uh, George Anderson, back to the north, there's a, uh, there is still some obstruction to, for vegetation for a period of few feet. And it, uh, it wouldn't take that much to trim it down. They've done a real good job of trimming down the corner of, of Ivy on the, the north side at George Anderson. Just need a little around the corner and that would really, uh, help when somebody is pulling up to that particular intersection.
I, I gave, I gave it to Brad today to go look at it.
Okay, you're, you're clear on where it is Brad, okay. I don't know if that's city right away or if that's...
It looks like, well, it...
It's, it is. We've moved it before, you said, but we just hadn't done it yet.
Okay. All right, good deal. Anything else? Any other council?
Yes, um, on I forty-nine, now that we have annexed Bethel Heights, there's two signs, one north and south wagon wheel that says Bethel Heights Exit. Uh, we make contact with, uh, proper authorities and either have it changed to Springdale or...
Yeah.
Brian, are those signs, are those signs still up? Because I talked to Heath yesterday and they thought they had gotten all the signs down and he really wanted one for the water department. But somebody had taken most of the signs down and it wasn't the city.
The highway department's signs are up on, on I forty-nine.
I'm, I'm talking about, in other parts of our city.
Yeah, the city limit signs, I think souvenir hunters got them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Brad, your, your guys are working on that, about getting some Springdale sign, city limit signs in those areas.
Brad, if you, Brad, if you find one of the Bethel Heights signs still up, would you make sure it goes to the water department? They wanted to put it in their office. Okay. Just know that they were, they were looking for one.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that they're probably hanging in somebody's bedroom.
Thought about that.
Yeah. Uh, so anyway, any other? Uh, let's see, city attorney?
Not other than what you're gonna mention about, what we're gonna talk about Monday night.
Yeah, Monday night, we'll, uh, we'll add to the committee meeting just an update on Bethel Heights and, uh, the, some of the things that have been done. And, uh, we'll continue with it. We, we've got some plans for some, uh, public meetings over the next few months, uh, dealing with some specific issues. Um, Thursday night, I don't, I just wanted to go ahead and let you all know. I've, I found out about it yesterday and I talked to Heath about it today. The Springdale Water Utilities is hosting a meeting up there. It's gonna be outside. People are bringing their lawn chairs and, uh, up, but outside the old Bethel Heights City Hall, uh, to talk about just water and sewer, what they've done, what they intend to do, just be informational, should be a very positive meeting. They've, they've done a lot of work up there already, uh, Springdale Water has. And, uh, uh, but I'm gonna go and just sit in and there may be city, there may be questions about city come up. It's at six PM Thursday night. So you're welcome to come. I just wanted you to know about it. Uh, I don't know, you know, I'll probably just sit in the back if I can and just listen. But, uh, if there is a question about, about some city issues, well, I, I, it'd probably be good for us to hear if there are some concerns or questions, but, uh, so any of that can make that, you're just, you're welcome. So not, not necessary, but, uh, you're sure welcome to be there. Wanted you to know about it. Uh, that's all I've got.